All right, that's all right.
All right, well, thank you, and thanks for helping us navigate the minor technical difficulties. Seeing that it is past the hour of 6:00 PM on Monday, April 18th, 2022, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Series. Notice that this meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, Subdivision E of the Ralph and Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950 at SEC, Series Resolution Number 2022-06, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of the emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing planning@ci-series.ca.us by 5:00 PM of the date of the meeting. Include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission. And for those in the audience, you'll note that the commission is participating via Zoom due to some technical updates that are taking place with the Zoom capability in the council chambers. So having called the meeting to order, I would ask that you all rise as I lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Katchel.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Present.
And Chairperson Smith.
Here, thank you. And I don't know if there's a microphone that's on at the podium, maybe that's causing some of the feedback, but I'll leave that to the people in the room to try to figure out. We'll move on to Conflicts of Interest Declaration. Are there any members of the commission who have a conflict of interest to declare?
No.
All right, I see none. We'll move on then to Citizen Communications to the Commission on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time on any matter not on the agenda? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Do you see any, Ann?
I see no hands raised at this time, and there's no one here at the council chambers that would like to speak.
Thank you. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom right of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press star nine on your phone. Names will be called in the order the requests are received, and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Let's see, I do not see any hands raised in the Zoom audience, do you, Ann?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you. All right, have we received any public comments through email? No, we have not. I didn't hear you, but I saw you. All right, thank you. We'll move on now to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any questions on the consent calendar items? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item one, Clerk's Report of Posting. The agenda for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of April 18th, 2022, was posted on April 13th, 2022. Item two A, Approval of Minutes, from the March 21st, 2022 meeting, and Commissioner Johnson was absent that evening. Item three, Lot Line Adjustment 22-03, Resolution Number PC 22-06, approving a lot line adjustment for Series Gateway Center LLC to adjust an existing property line shared between two properties located at the southwest corner of Service Road and Mitchell Road.
All right, thank you. So, Commission, I would like to take Items One and Three separately from Item Two, since Commissioner Johnson is not able to vote on Item Two as he was absent. So at this time, I will accept a motion for Items One and Three.
I'll make a motion for Items One and Three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero. Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Katchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Del Nero, I'm sorry, I already said that, and Commissioner Katchel. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now I'll move on to Item Two of the Consent Calendar with Commissioner Johnson abstaining. Do I have a motion for that item?
I'll move approval.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do you want me to call the roll, Ann, since you're having some back feedback? All right, so we'll go Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Katchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And Commissioner Johnson is abstaining, that motion passes 4-01 abstention. I'm listening to you, Ann, when you do this. Hey, I got a job. All right, good job, everyone. Thank you so much for that. No items were moved to consent, so we'll move to public hearings. Item Four, Conditional Use Permit 22-08. It's a proposal for a conditional use permit entitlement to allow an existing snow cone iced coffee business to operate on a year-round basis at 2000 Central Avenue. Hector Arisava and Violet Savae are the applicants. And I, Mr. Michaels, do we have a staff report?
Thank you very much, ma'am chair. So what we have here is the applicant, Heaven Snow, is a business located at 2000 Central Avenue near the Los Sequoia supermarket that operates for six months out of each year from April through October. As a shaved ice stand, they sell ice cold treats to the customers, and they've been doing so since 2007. Due to the size of the building that is utilized for the operation, the city's zoning code allows the applicant to operate for no more than six months out of the year through the city's administrative permit process. In September of 2021, the applicant met with staff to discuss the possibility of operating on a year-round basis and requested a six-month extension of their existing administrative permit, thereby allowing the applicant to operate during the fall-winter season from October 2021 through April 2022, to see if there was enough demand where the applicant would want to remain open year-round. Staff granted that, the applicant, that extension, which expired on April 10th of this year. About two months ago, the applicant informed staff that there was enough demand for their business to remain open year-round, but as part of that, their operation, they would like to explore the possibility of incorporating a drive-through component as part of their operation. As a commercial zoning allows drive-through restaurant uses, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit, staff determined the applicant's proposal is consistent with the drive-through restaurant use and may request the approval of a use permit. Approval of the use permit would allow the applicant to operate on a year-round basis with the possibility of allowing a drive-through component as part of their operation, and so they applied on March 14th, 2022. Mr. Home, could you display the aerial site plan on page 58, please? Okay, that's page 50. So that's currently what you see there on the screen. Can you go to 58? Yeah, right there. Thank you very much. And so the applicant did provide a narrative explaining their intent of the operation, which can be viewed on pages 17 through 22 of the staff report. Generally, vehicle access serves the site by way of two entrances, one from Central Avenue and the other from Caswell. They lead to the grocery store's parking lot area consisting of 27 parking spaces. The use permit would allow, or would also include a drive-through component, again, to provide a greater flexibility to the customers when ordering. Now, in the past, the administrative permits that were approved did not allow for the drive-through operation component due to concerns that the drive-through would potentially obstruct onsite traffic flow with the parking lot that serves the customers of the nearby Los Sequoia supermarket grocery store and off-site traffic flow with vehicles queuing from the Central Avenue roadway. To address staff's concerns regarding the potential traffic conflicts with the drive-through, the applicant is proposing to utilize the side parking lot window on the east side of the building for only taking orders and payment and incorporating a directional sign on the building that indicates no more than two vehicles would be allowed at the drive-through. And you see on the aerial shot that tried to do an estimated two cars, where two cars might fit along through there, along that side of that building. Now, as may be needed, employees would direct all other customers to the grocery store parking area so that the Central Avenue entrance remains unobstructed. While the drive-through is being utilized, the applicant's employees directing customers, they've been doing accordingly, and it's expected that a minimum drive-through width of 18 feet would be maintained in this part of the parking area to allow for two-way vehicle access, and the drive-through would not conflict with vehicles entering and exiting the Central Avenue entrance. Staff believes these measures proposed by the applicant will help maintain onsite vehicle circulation. And so with that said, staff is in support of the applicant's proposal. With the amount of available onsite parking, it's highly unlikely that the applicant's proposal would impact the parking area typically used for the grocery store use. The proposal was routed to the city's police and fire departments as well as engineering, and there were no objections raised regarding the applicant's proposal. The applicant is wanting to comply with all the conditions of approval listed on the staff report, and so again, staff has no objections to the applicant's request.
All right, thank you, Mr. Michaels. Does anyone on the commission have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, if I could.
Yes, please, Mr. Katchel.
First off, how big is that building or shack? Do we know? I didn't see that in the report.
Oh, it's less than 120 square feet. Well, I think, I want to say it's a 10 by 10, 10 by 11.
All right, I'm just trying to get a ballpark figure. And when it was originally approved, you said in the report that it was only allowed for six months because of the size. What's the thinking behind that?
Good question. That's actually written in the code for administrative permits. I believe that the idea is when it's more than 120 square feet, it would be typically a building permit, you know, more of a permanent building would be required. And so the code actually talks about if it's less than 120, that was the process that, and that has been in the code for quite some time, but that was the thought there, I think.
Okay, I think I understand that. I think that's all I have. There's no restroom in there, is there?
No, the customers would still be utilizing the restroom facilities at the Los Sequoia supermarket.
As with the employees, I assume?
That is correct.
Okay, I have a couple of comments later, but that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who that was.
Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, go ahead.
Currently, what are their operating months?
Typically, it would be like April through October, you know, and that has been consistent throughout the year. They were more of a summer operation. It wasn't until last October that the applicant approached me, specifically me, you know, to discuss the possibility of extending their permit as like a tryout.
Okay.
They were looking to do some, maybe some other coffee items, or, you know, or, you know, the applicant could get more into that as to what they were really serving. But it would be like, you know, like, part of the winter would be this type of, you know, food-related item, and then summer they would change it, you know, flip-flop.
Okay, and then you said that the plan is to have them have two cars in their drive-through.
No more than that, no more than that at any one time, right?
Is there, is there any penalty or anything that would happen if they can't continue to keep two cars at a minimum? Because hypothetically, if an employee is making their drinks, are they going to also manage the cars in line as well?
Yeah, that would be, there would have to be at least another employee that would have to be on the lookout to see that and direct folks accordingly. If we had multiple complaints about, hey, we got queuing out in the Central Avenue, then that would be something we'd have to pay attention to and then note it, and then maybe have to make some adjustments to the conditions or, you know, evaluate it further, you know, to see what may need to be done.
Okay, so currently, there's no potential penalties in place?
Not as such, not yet.
Okay, the last question, is this the first time the applicants requested something like this before?
For year-round, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was my last question.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Martinez, I'm sorry. Any other questions, Mr. Del Nero, Mr. Johnson?
I do, yes. You know, I would, I picture on screen, but it's not true for some reason. It said the host has has disabled my picture thing, so. With that said, does this type of business need a business license?
Yes, yes, and they do have one.
Okay, and for the six months, and this will be, the license will be for a year or two, as if it's approved, right?
Correct, that is correct.
Is there any other business in town like this?
No, not to staff's knowledge. The only one that, I guess you could compare it to that might have some similarities might be the food truck operators that we might have, the single food truck operators that we have in town. But other than that, this will be the first.
And one, one last thing. I know during Christmas, and this is obviously a far-fetched maybe question, we grant, let's say, Home Depot to block off their area to put Christmas trees. Is this what we're talking about, or is this just wholly something different?
No, so like with Home Depot, that was part of their use permit that allowed for them to do it on an annual basis. They don't, they could choose to do it or not. And this, in this case, the applicant would have the right to do it year-round, but only on this particular property. If they decided things were not working out, the use goes away if it's not utilized in some other fashion, you know, that's appropriate, you know, then, then the use permit generally would go away. But it's supposed to be a continuous. It typically runs with the land.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
James, Commissioner Martinez, again, I had two more questions.
Yeah.
Do they plan on making any additions to the, to the building? Are they going to cut in a drive-through?
No, there wouldn't be, good question. There wouldn't be enough room where this is located. Essentially, that would take up actual parking, parking spaces or access. So what you see there, they're, basically, they're allowed to do the one just to the west end of that, of the building, like a pop-up little thing for shade, you know, like a shade structure that they typically might have during the summer, sometimes maybe winter, that they might have during operating hours. But that would be it, that would be the limit.
And then my last question is, do they, you know, this might be for the applicant, but do they plan on taking orders at the window, or are they planning on building a menu further down?
As far as I know, it would be orders at the window. They could probably elaborate on that, though.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. So if any of the commissioners have any additional questions, please be sure to raise your hand so I can make sure everyone has a chance to ask questions. I think Mr. Johnson had his hand up. Go ahead.
Commissioner Martinez kind of addressed the drive-through issue and enforcement of a line not backing up on the central, which I see a very likely scenario. It's going to be, I don't know, enforcing that's going to be kind of hard.
But, yeah, so what could happen is, this could be, you know, a step-by-step basis, so depending on how the operation goes, once the drive-through is implemented. If we get complaints, you know, we could evaluate it, you know, and see if there's any options. And if there are, then we, until they, you know, we could work with the applicant on doing that. If after those measures are still not working, and it appears to be like some, like a nuisance or whatever, we might then do a further evaluation and then bring it back to the commission to like for some kind of review and possibly revoking the use permit that we do have as part of the conditions of approval, that if it didn't work out, couldn't work out, and it was more, shall we say, you know, not good for the community, it's a safety issue, then the commission at that time would have the opportunity to revoke that use permit.
All right.
They can't step in if they see necessary.
Right.
Okay, I have some follow-ups on, on the questions that were already asked. Let me go back to the question by Commissioner Katchel about the size of the building being 120 square feet. And you noted, James, that that was due to the fact that anything over 120 square feet requires a building permit. Does that mean, does the building have electricity and water?
They have the opportunity, they would have to get that, that is correct. That would, there'd be maybe electrical permit, I think that that would be done through the Building Division. I think it has been a condition on the previous administrative permits that the applicant do it, you know.
So right now, in order to operate, they have to have electricity and water because they're service lines. So, so those are separate permits. It doesn't require a whole building permit, just an electrical.
Right, right. Correct, it, it, correct, the building permit, that's just something that we, that we call it, yeah.
Okay, all right, and so with regard to the Health Department, the Health Department also regulates this type of activity. I read in the conditions that their Health Department approval does not allow any food preparation. They are allowed to sell prepackaged foods.
Right.
And I think, I don't know much about it, but I think for preparing a food, you have to have access to hot water. And you also have to have a designated restroom location. So does that mean they have some sort of documentation from the Sequoia Market regarding use of their restroom?
Right, Los Sequoia has given their permission. They gave a letter, they provided staff with a letter saying that they support what they are doing, so.
Both the, the use of the restroom by the employees as well as the customers.
Correct.
Okay. And then I think some questions were already asked that I have concerns about the drive-through issue. So while there's no enforcement mechanism, it would be more based on a complaint basis. So let's say, just hypothetically, so I can understand how this works, that this conditional use permit with the drive-through wasn't, was approved, and it wasn't working out, and it comes back to the commission. So the whole conditional, conditional use permit gets revisited, and it could be reissued excluding the drive-through.
Correct.
And the same goes, holds true for tonight. The conditional use permit could be issued excluding the drive-through.
Correct.
Okay. I think I had one more question. Okay, and I was interested, and I think I received a response about the other surrounding businesses that Four Corners seems to be hopping right now with George's Liquor opening recently and his grill and gas station. So these businesses, including George's and the other that are in the area, were all notified.
The property, the property owners, the property owners were notified.
So that doesn't necessarily mean the businesses were notified.
That is correct, but the businesses, I know George's Liquor, they know that they've been seeing the, the snow cone shack, have been operating for years. I don't, I think we would have heard from them by now that there was concern about it, if they had, if they had any concerns.
All right. Okay, those are the questions that I had at this time. Unless there's any other questions from the commission, I will open up the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter. I'm going to have to rely on Ann to tell me what's going on there, because it's a tiny, tiny box on my screen.
We have someone in the audience who's going to be speaking using Christopher's laptop.
Thank you, sir, and please remember to state your name and address for the record before you begin speaking, begin speaking, and welcome.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Council.
Commission.
Commission, John Warren, I live here in the City of Series. My primary concern here in asking some questions regarding this issue is the drive-through, okay? If the cars are going to exit from Central and drive in past the window, which would be on the driver's side, on the left side of that building, it's going to be hard for them to park in the parking that's available at the Sequoia Market there, because the spaces run the opposite direction that the vehicles are moving. And then if traffic backs up out on the Central, I noticed on the health permit that there's two people with a card for preparing food there. And if those people are busy preparing coffees, which seems to be a hot drink to me, who's going to go out and direct traffic? And who's going to have the training to direct traffic out on Central Avenue where those cars are going to be parking or stopping in traffic? And on the other matter, young people going out and asking the driver to move their car because there's only allowed two in the line, what's going to happen when the person says, I don't want to move my car and wait in the hot sun? And so I think the drive-through might have some problems to begin with that should be thought out before experimenting and then trying to come back and correct something that should never have gone forward to begin. Just the other day, when I was getting my car washed at the local car wash there on Hatch, I left a little space between me and the car ahead of me so that people could back out of the vacuum places. And this lady zipped around on my left side and jammed in front of my vehicle in a half a space just so she could get up there and get her car washed a half a second before I could. And so drivers are very discourteous. People waiting in line, as we know, as we go through McDonald's and some of the other drive-through in the city. So it's going to be hard for an employee there, a young person preparing coffees or drinks, to go out and ask somebody to move their car, and that person tells them to blow off, and we're not going to obey. And so traffic is going to back up out into the street. And I don't think young people who aren't trained to direct traffic should be going out in the street trying to tell drivers that they need to move their cars. Now, this won't happen a lot, but it only takes one person to get run over out there, and then there's a major problem. Other than that, that's my only really big concern here. I just don't think there's a space adequate for drive-through. I think the kiosk will serve its purpose in our community, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience, Ann, that would like to speak on this matter? Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience, Ann, that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, there's one more.
Good afternoon, sir, if you can state your name and address for the record.
I won't give you my address, enough people know, they wanna kill me in town anyway, so I'll give you my name, Gene Akeley, Series, California. As James was talking from the planning department, I was kinda concerned about, is this business considered or kinda in the same parallel as sidewalk vending? And if it is, have they provided by all the sections and codes? There's like 10 pages, just in chapter 17 on sidewalk vending, even though that building's, well, it could move, but it's pretty much stationary, it's been there for a long time. And I'd just like to know that if, if one, the planning department was reviewing their requests for certain things. If the sidewalk vending codes in the City of Series were part of their decision to move forward and let these people do what they are willing to do, and.
Before Mr. Michaels answers your question, do you have other questions that he can answer them all at one time?
I was concerned too, they already answered that about the restroom. And evidently, on the vending code anyway, there has to be someone, i- if that's parallel to what these people are, with their snow stand, snow cone stand, is that somebody has to be there all the time. You know, so what's gonna happen, are all these people be gonna cross, take their places? Somebody's gonna be, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's not gonna be a whole, like these hamburger place with 10, 12 cars out there at one time or, or the coffee places. But these people are gonna have to go to the restroom or whatever, somebody else is gonna have to take their place. Now somebody's worried about the parking issue that the city's brought up for them. I think we need to answer those questions too.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, yeah, so to answer the, the question. The city, this was not part of the sidewalk vending ordinance, this was a completely separate permit, uh, uh, use that has been going on since 2007. Okay, so for basically 15 years. It wasn't intended to be considered a sidewalk vendor, sidewalk vendor would just have a table. You know, and a, maybe a chair with their product, this is with inside their, their facilities. They're 110 square foot, or 100 square foot building. So, no, that is not part of the sidewalk vendor ordinance.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else? Okay, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. We've had some great concerns.
Can you state your name, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Violet Savae, and I am Hector Rosava's wife. We are the owners of Heaven Snow, going in 15 years now. And City of Series on 2000 Central. And first I wanna say thank you for allowing us to serve this community. We, this is our home away from home. We're originally from Charlock, but we love City of Series because we've been here for a long time and made lots of friends. And I understand that safety is a lot of, of your concerns. And believe us, as owners of a small business, that is the last thing we wanna see is someone getting hurt or complaints or any kind of accidents. So within the last 14 years, we have taken lots of measures. We've also trained our employees, and we are consistently training as we're working throughout the day, making sure that we are using and working in a safety atmosphere. As far as the permits go, our permits have always been a six-month permit due to the fact that City of Series never used to allow anything temporarily or any food trucks to be allowed in the city limits. We were the third owners, the stand's been there currently almost 30 years. And we were given the six months conditional permit due to that reason. However, when things had changed the last couple of years, we decided that, you know, since we're doing six months, we'd like to go ahead and do something for the winter, since a lot of students and customers are asking us. And are, also to give our employees their job, to get, to let them be able to work year-round as well, not having to quit every six months and come back or retrain and the whole back and forth. So we came across a local series coffee roaster, and we said, "You know what, why not? Everything is local, we're gonna continue to serve if the city allows us", which we worked with James, and I wanna thank him and everybody else for allowing us to do that. So we continued opening this last winter. Our customers continued loving our coffee, and we wanna continue doing that year-round. Now, as far as the drive-through goes, I don't think it's going to be more of a drive-through. What our anticipation and our goal is, is just to let the people that are elderly, handicap, moms that have lots of kids in the vehicle that can't just get out, just to order, and we're going to be handling the money and order-taking and having them park. We will be taking the order out to them or giving them also the option to get down and pick up their order at the front window. Nothing is going to be handed out to them through the window. And there will be a sign indicating no more than two vehicles. Also, I understand that there was a, a question brought up as far as two food permits being on, in, on the file. We do have six employees anticipating on hiring two more. And we do also employ two to three employees at a time in the stand, plus a management. So we've never had a problem or accidents as far as guiding people the right direction of parking, paying, and then parking, or restrooms, or any of that. Had we had any issues, I think our landlord would have been the first to notify you guys all, I'm sure. Because I don't think they wanna lose any customers as well. But everything that was brought up was a very, you know, understood. And we know that safety is our number one, and it's our number one, it always has been our number one. And if it, if we can give this a try as a permit to actually be in, into use, it'd be great. Especially, like I said, for our elderly, our handicap, with the whole COVID situation that went on. A lot of people are, you know, still not feeling comfortable completely getting out of their vehicle and being around other people. So it just, I feel like it'd be a positive thing more than a, a, a bad thing.
Alright, well, I appreciate your time, let me see if there's any of the commissioners that may have any questions for you as the applicant of this item, anyone on the commission have any questions? Alright, well, thank you so much for speaking to us, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Ann, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter?
I see no hands raised at this time.
And on Zoom either, I'm assuming.
No, there's no hands.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. We'll start, since we're not in the same room, I'll just go around my little box here and I'll start with Commissioner Catchell.
Okay, I appreciate the, the applicant's comments, I think they're trying very hard to make this work. I do have some issues, however. Basically, we have what now is a, it's a, it's a seasonal or temporary business as it exists right now and has been for, I guess, 15 years now. And it's in a facility which is extremely small. And not really, it just sort of sits there, as I understand it, it's not attached or a little foundation or anything, goes like that. I'm concerned particularly with the drive-through portion of this. If you go in a more commercial drive-through, you see bollards posted, usually metal to keep cars from hitting buildings and whatnot. Those are for safety reasons. They're usually posted next to the order window, which is usually your, you know, microphone you order and then you go pick it up the window. And there's also the bollards there to prevent you from hitting the, the window or the building at that location. We don't have any of those safety features here that I can see, and that really concerns me for the people who are inside the building. It's kind of a different, difficult place to maneuver into. You come in off of, northbound on Central, you turn in there and try to pull up to the window. And then they take your order, your money, and understand that part. But then, as a gentleman spoke earlier, the parking lot, the parking spaces up near the store are usually full. And I think they were even in that photo that we saw. So the parking right next to the shack are going the other direction, so you'd have to go up and around and turn around. I, I just don't think a lot of thought's been put into the, the drive-through portion of this thing from a safety point of view and, and from an operational point of view. In another lifetime, when I was a young man, I actually was trained as a flagman. I worked construction during the summers and I did flagging. Where you have the stop sign and the flag and everything else, and was working for heavy construction at the time. And I guess, I never thought I'd use that experience in anything in my life again. But tonight, it's reminding me how scary that can be, trying to get people to listen to you. Even though you got a hard hat, a vest, a flag, and a stop sign, to get them to do what you want them to do, what your job is to require them to do. The gentleman earlier indicated that he was concerned about young people going out there and trying to get people to obey. And I know, maybe people driving to and from work is a little different than getting a snow cone or a coffee. But it's not easy, people just are difficult to deal with at times. And I'm concerned with that, I hadn't thought of that till the gentleman brought it up, but then I flashed back on that. So for all those reasons, I just have some real concerns about the drive-through portion. I can't, I can't support that part of it at all. I understand what they're trying to do, but I also think they've been in business 15 years, and now they wanna go basically to a permanent business. It might be time to get a permanent building at a location where it's appropriate and it can have a better entrance and exit. We've got a relatively new drive-through in Series on another street and another location, which is built right at the entrance to a major shopping area. And that location is a little bit less than ideal, at least in my opinion, as to how it operates because the drive-through filters right into the ingress and egress on, for that facility. So for all those reasons, I hope that made sense, I, I just can't support the project, that's my take on it.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Catchell. Mr. Johnson?
Not really, I think Bob pretty much covered my direction part of it. I appreciate them doing business in Series. You know, the year-round thing doesn't really bother me, but the drive-through, just, I just see a lot of problems with that.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Uh, thank you, Chairperson. Yeah, so Bob, Bob sort of said a lot of, of my sentiment as well. I, I could get behind the, the year-round operation, but the drive-through is a concern for me. From a safety standpoint, from a code enforcement. I understand the applicant said that people would just pay and then drive away and park, but you're driving towards the opposite direction of incoming traffic. Like you mentioned in that photo, it looks like most of those upfront stalls are filled. There's nothing blocking that transformer right there, which looks like that's where they draw their power from, so I would hate to see a car hit that. And then, yeah, I do have concerns about having high school-aged children trying to tell adults in their car they need to move. So I also agree with Bob that that is a pretty big concern of mine.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Del Nero?
Uh, after hearing everybody, I really don't have too much to add. It, it can be, and I've directed traffic myself in uniform. And it is, it, it is kinda scary. So with that, I would support whatever, what Bob was saying.
Alright, thank you. I, I agree, Bob, you said it very well. And in addition to the concern about being able to control the drive-through traffic, there's already so much traffic there with two schools and George's Grill and the Market and the Bingo. And it's a four-way stop, I have real concerns about traffic queuing up onto Central Avenue, so I'm, I'm not in favor of a drive-through component. I think the year-round has some potential on its own. I'm grateful to see that the business is doing well enough to consider that. I know that they serve a lot of people in that neighborhood as well as the school. But I wouldn't be able to support the drive-through. So having said that, I will now ask the commission if anyone would like to make a motion. Either the motion on the floor or on the agenda item, or another motion that might make some adjustments to the current recommendation.
Chairperson Smith, can we vote on them separately, voting on the year-round permit and then voting on the drive-through? Or is it conditionally one or the other?
Well, I'm sure there's a city attorney here with us somewhere, but what I think is that if we were to vote to not approve the drive-through, it would be this conditional use permit without the drive-through component. So it would be just a single motion saying, "Move to approve the conditional use permit without the drive-through component". And it looks like Mr. Michaels is gonna either correct me or tell me something.
No, I, I would say you are correct, Madam Chair, and it also would mean that condition number B2 would be eliminated from the proposal, because that's the one that has to do with the drive-through.
Alright, so having said that, is there a motion anyone like to promote?
If I may, Chairperson.
Okay, I see you.
In lieu of eliminating the condition that Mr. Michaels just mentioned, it may be revised to still talk about a drive-through but prohibit it. If that's the, if that's the desire of the commission.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
If you're silent on it, then it's, it's a mystery, but if you call it out, then it's, it's something that you've discussed that you're prohibiting from, from having happened.
Okay, so, so an example would be, like, can you give us an example of how that would be phrased? So approving the conditional use permit 22-08 and prohibiting the use of a drive-through, eliminating condition B2 and prohibiting the use of a drive-through under this permit?
If that's, if that's the desire of the planning, yes, yes.
Right, right, okay. I'm not sure everybody understands that. So the choices are, approve the recommendation as it stands?
I have a quick question.
I don't see who that is.
It's me again.
Okay, well, I've closed the public hearing at this time, so I'll give you, just real quick, because we're trying to deliberate at this point.
Okay, like I mentioned earlier, our intent is not to do a drive-through. The definition of drive-through meaning to hand food and, and have cars piling up. Our whole purpose was if we can just have us something that will at least minimize or, or give us a condition to, or at least we can help out people who are handicapped or elder that can't get out of their vehicle, mainly.
I appreciate that.
To have a whole drive-through going out on Centers, on, on Central either.
Thank you, we, we, we heard that you stated that initially, and in case any of the commissioners didn't recall that. And I don't think a drive-through permit or, or condition is required for you to assist customers in their cars. So I think that can still continue, and James, if you wanna add any, anything to what I just said. And to bring customers out their food, or their, I'm sorry, their drink, doesn't require a drive-through condition.
That, that is correct.
Okay. Alright, so we have, at this time, the way I see it, and you may see others, three options. To approve the recommendation as staff has made it. Approve the recommendation with the prohibiting any type of drive-through. Or not allowing the issuance of the conditional permit at all. So at this time, the floor is open for any motions from the commission. So at this time, um uh the floor is open for any um motions from the commission.
So what would the verbiage need to be if I wanted to uh approve the conditional use permit but to deny the uh drive-through? What exactly would I need to make that motion?
So I believe that you could um move to approve conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero eight, eliminating condition B two and specifically prohibiting a drive-through use.
Then I'd like to make a motion to uh approve the conditional use permit twenty-two dash oh eight, the proposed conditional use permit, and to uh disallow B two, the uh drive-through.
So I I think, uh, okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion unless somebody else had.
All right, I have a motion in a second. And we'll, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Katchel?
Aye.
And Chairperson Smith?
Before I vote, I just wanna make sure we're clear. This is eliminating B two and specifically prohibiting the the use of a drive-through at this location.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, aye. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, thank you to the applicant and to the members of the audience who came to speak on this item. We appreciate you. We'll move on. Uh, there are no new business items, uh no public key meetings, no items under unfinished business, no matters have been initiated by the planning commissioner staff. So now we'll move on to reports. Anyone on the commission have anything to report? You can indicate so by raising your hand. Okay, I will do the same thing for staff. If any of the staff have anything to report, just raise your hand. You can either, oh, Ann has her hand raised, yay.
I would like to wish our esteemed Commissioner Katchel a belated happy birthday. Yesterday was his birthday, and I'd like us all to acknowledge and wish Bob happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Bob.
Well, thank you, everyone. I I qualify for one of those customers. The, I I'm, I get around, but I'm definitely old.
Twenty-nine again? I I'd sell for sixty-nine at this point, yes.
Well, happy birthday, Bob. Um, all right, I don't, I'm not sure if the city attorney is on.
So the city attorney is here.
Oh, is that you, Josh? I'm sorry.
No, that's me. Sorry, I have some technical difficulties. The fire alarm went off for a second.
Okay.
No, no reports from the city attorney. Good job with the conditions.
Thank you. Um, all right, and then I think I already asked city staff. You you still have your hand up, Ann. Do you have something else? All right, and then Christopher, we've enjoyed seeing just your left eye through this entire meeting. It's been quite amusing. Uh, it was hard for me to keep a straight face and keep this on task. Uh, so thanks for the um, the humor. All right, so.
I'm here all night.
All right, well, that concludes our meeting. I will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be held on Monday, May the second. Hope you all have a good night. Thank you.